If everybody. All right, if everybody's ready, we're going to move right into the Finley City Council meeting. We are starting a little late due to the length of that meeting or the public hearing. So, welcome to tonight's Finley City Council meeting on October 3rd, 2023, regular session. We will start this evening's meeting with roll call, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Mr. Baumann?
Here.
Ms. Frischie?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Here.
Mr. Hellman?
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Ms. Warnicki?
Here.
And Mr. Wobser?
Present.
Mr. Russell is absent. He's out of state. I will entertain a motion to excuse Mr.
Make a motion to accuse Councilman Russell.
Second, Mr. Baumann, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of excusing Mr. Russell say aye. Any opposed, nay. He is excused. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Wobser, do we have any add-ons, replacements, or removals from tonight's agenda?
We do, well, we have not gotten anything that was given to us that I have seen. So, I'm not sure what the disposition of the minutes from the last meeting were, but I think we'll just allow those to roll over to our next meeting for approval.
So, due to the volume of the minutes from the last meeting, it's currently at 14 pages, one of the longest ever. Those have not been completed and reviewed by myself, and we will have those at the next meeting, so. And, okay, we have no proclamations, we have no recognitions or retirement resolutions. We do have a petition this evening.
Petition for annexation for County Road 230 and 212, also known as Hat Trick, also known as Buchanan, also known as Sheets, annexation. The agent for the petitioner is Phil Rooney. That was filed on September 11th, 2023, and it's for parcel 020001030154 to be annexed from Allen Township.
Questions or comments? The resolution has been created for this petition. We do have two oral communications this evening, and we're going to go in as ordered. The first one is from Robin Welly. Robin, make sure that the light is on, right, when you get up there, and she'd like to talk about the West Park bill.
Hello, I'm Robin Welly. First of all, I'd like to thank the guys from Finley, Jeremy, Rob, and Dave Hans, really rocks. Today, in our park, they were painting our basketball hoops, and they were washing things down, and they were doing a great job. They've come to our block watch meeting, stepped up, answered our questions, and I want to give a big yay to them before I complain. I'm not going to complain. I'm Robin Welly. I'm head president of the Block Watch Committee. Tonight, I passed out a neighborhood map with the location of our storm sues on it. The original article in The Courier, we felt was a misrepresentation of our system. As you look at the size of our neighborhood versus the blue lines, you see we are underdeveloped and how much we depend on our green space. Green space, we have been losing substantially to the builds and the roundabout. Now, with the threat of a whole new subdivision, it would become an alarming amount, especially since it's proposed at the bottom of our neighborhood. Yes, the bottom. You don't drive into West Park, you drive down into West Park. So, the green space at the bottom is very important to the current residents. Since we last consul representation, we have decided to open our block watch up to any elected official. We feel an open-door policy hopefully will attract the qualified individuals who will help us maintain our standard of living we now have in West Park. Tonight, we extend a special limitation to our mayor to attend. We would like her to address the potential traffic and flooding issues that will accompany the city's new subdivision. Our next block watch meeting is Tuesday, October 31st, at 6:00, at the New Creation Church at 1648 Lima Avenue in West Park. We hope to see a few of your caring faces there. The entire block watch group wants to thank you all for your time tonight.
Questions for Ms. Welly. Thank you. Our second request for, to speak tonight, is Hady Sadler, and she would like to speak to the smart water meters.
My name is Hady Sadler. I live at 220 Defiance Avenue, and I want to talk about the smart water meters, which I believe Finley started calling transmitters last year. I just wanted to give a couple of my concerns and, well, I'm just going to read what I have written down. Smart meters give off electromagnetic radiation and radio frequency radiation. They are regarded as an important step toward the development of a smart grid, which plays an important role in the transition to a low-carbon economy. It's the global climate action agenda. Smart meters can produce up to 60 times the U.S. safety limit. The radio frequency put off is known to be carcinogenic. Not only can it cause cancer, but it also causes headaches, fatigue, dizziness, memory disruption, sleep deprivation, stimulation to nerves and muscles, and many other health problems. Add that to the exposure from 5G and the frequency put off by the recently fired-up digital station we now have, we may all be burnt and fried up soon. While the city of Finley aims to be a safe city, these high frequencies that are cancer-causing, in combination with the unaddressed illegal immigrants by I-75, and the rising drug problem in our city, will prove Finley not to be a safe city.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. We will now do reports of municipal officers and departments.
Officer shareholders disclosure form from Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, for Ralph's Supplies Incorporated, doing business as Ralph's Joy of Living, located at 1926 Tiffin Avenue, for D5 and D6 liquor permits. A check of the records show no criminal record for those who applied.
Mr. Slough.
I would move no objection be filed.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor that no objection be filed, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay, that it will not be filed.
Board of zoning appeals minutes for August 10th, 2023, as well as the status of BZA case BZA 25202263427 for 526 South Main Street, as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As well as the status of BZA case BZA 10202263665 for 3012 Goldenrod Lane.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed, minutes to be filed.
Finley Police Departmental Activities Report for August 2023.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Design Review Board for September 13th, 2023.
Questions or comments? Minutes to be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding Keep Active, Keep Healthy Project Donation.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed. Ordinance number 2023-101 was created.
Treasuries Reconciliation Report for August 31st, 2023.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding Indigent Defense Services Renewal Agreement for years 2023 to 2025.
Questions or comments? Ms. Frischie.
I just don't understand, or I guess I've never paid attention to it. What does this cover? What do, and why are we paying it different than normal?
Ms. Mayor.
It's just our public defender contract. It's not any different than normal. The amount is different than the prior three years because the prior three years, we were paying some catch-up funds, where we had to make up some funds that had been underpaid some of the previous years. So, what this is, is this is just stipulating in the new contract that the city is not paying a disproportionate amount based off of the state's share of our fees. So, previously, in doing some reconciliation, we found that we were being charged a set amount. The county was collecting that, but then they were also receiving some reimbursement from the state, and the city wasn't necessarily seeing that benefit. So, we have addressed that in the contract, which will decrease our contract amount, and then we've established a process for reconciling on a go-forward basis.
Mr. Sasek.
Quickly, the normal process, and part of the reason this may be confusing to some of you is, this group would have come and spoke to you directly regarding the matter and to give you perspective from their office, and I just wanted to mention that that did not happen. Roger Miller in the past would come and speak to you folks. So, if that's your pleasure, you might want to encourage that to happen and keep that relationship that you've always had with that body directly.
Other questions or comments? Letter to be filed. Ordinance 2023-106 was created.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding Han Interstate and FHS Trails, PID 115232, project number 32821400.
Questions or comments? Ms. Frischie.
Jeremy, we're extending for 10 feet, and we needed to add the engineering for another 40,000. Refresh me on what did we pay out previously on this?
Go ahead.
So, the 40,000 is not for the engineering, this is for right-of-way plans. So, as we were going through it, so, I guess to answer your first question, I think it was a little over 100,000 we had for engineering fees on this. As we were getting into design with where these driveways are, how close they are to the right-of-way, and their grades and all that kind of stuff, getting the 10-foot path in there, and we had to have that pretty well flat because of ADA. Well, we're running into issues where we're so close to the right-of-way, and getting smooth transitions into private property of the drives was not being able to be accomplished without having, you know, large slopes that could cause a car to drag on the bottom. So, what we have to do, because this is an ODOT-funded federal funds, we have to follow their guidelines for that. If this was all city funds, we will work with the homeowners and say, hey, would you allow us to go back in there? But, this is totally different set of rules when we have ODOT funding. So, what this is, this is getting additional plans. We have to have full set of right-of-way plans for them to go out and show all the temporary easements, or temporary right-of-ways we need, right-of-ways we need. So, if there are donations or anything like that. So, the next step, what I've kind of explained in my email I sent to you guys, too, is I will have to hire an acquisition consultant to do the negotiating for us. All these people have to be pre-qualified through ODOT. I can't do it unless I get pre-qualified, no one else. So, we, unfortunately, these are steps we have to do. We are hoping to avoid it, but with the grades that we found out, it was difficult to get by it.
Other questions or comments? Letter to be filed. Ordinance 2023-108 was created.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding Finley Airport Rehab of Runway 725 Design.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding Blanter Valley Port Authority Appointment. This requires council's confirmation.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion that we approve Mr. Pfeiffer for the Port Authority Appointment.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of his appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. He is appointed.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding Water System Replacement Project Number 35783300.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding Insurance Reimbursement of Destroyed Traffic Signal Cabinet.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding Update on Project Hat Trick, also known as Sheets.
Questions or comments? Ms. Frischie.
I'm still a broken record on this location situation. I'm understanding the location of being on 212, and my question, I had sent some emails to Jeremy, because I was told through economic development that we were doing the design work for that, but it sounds like the infrastructure's across the street, and we're just going to bring it across the street. And then, when I look at the original appropriation that we did for this project, for Sheets to come, we put about $3 million between water, sewer, and storm over. So, are we not going to need that now, is what I'm trying to get to? That would be great.
Go ahead.
So, like I said in the email that I sent back to you, you know, giving the update on that, so, the sanitary is going to be extended down. That is on Township Road 99. That is going to be extended down, down to this property, and then also to the east of the property or to County Road 230, to set up for any kind of future expansion or anything like that is needed. So, we're like, you know, we're setting up for the future on that. The water line, yes, there is a water line on County Road 212. It's a 20-inch line, but we want to make sure, same thing, set up for the future for anything that's happening to the north, that's happening to the east, west, whatever, that we're never going to hurt ourselves in the future. With that, so, we're going to extend that water line up through, by the, you know, up 230, and we're evaluating where the best and cost-efficient location of this water line would be for us in the long run, for any type of expansion. But, if they, if they just tie on to 212, then they only have one tap off of there. With that additional line that's coming off of there, now they'll be able to have two taps, possibly three total, if they are wanting to, to help create redundancy and actual fire flow through their system and through our system. So, if a line breaks, say, the new line for, you know, happens to break on 230, well, we can close some valves and they still have a feed. If the feed on 212 breaks, then we can close some valves, and now they have a feed off 230. Where, if they just pulled off of 212, the existing line, they only have one line. If something happens to that main line, and they're not able to get feed, they only have one feed through there. So, you always, with bigger sites and stuff like that, you have fire loops to create, you know, fire suppression for that. So, you create multiple taps off of that, so you can create redundancy through water and also fire flow. So, that way, you got multiple sources coming in with that. Again, like I said, we're always going to make sure that we set up for the future. So, we're going to be running that line up through there to set up, so if anything expands to the east of this site, you know, say Bright Road or something like that, we have that, another source for that water to be pulled from. So, then you would have one from 212, and then you would have one from the 99 area. So, it's just creating redundancy within our system as well.
Mr. Sasek.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple notes. I was looking for some documents from the original executive session I have yet to receive, so if I could get those, it'd be a big help. But, based on the comments in this letter and the comments the engineer just made, I think it would be appropriate, so we don't get too deep into here, for us to have a combined probably appropriations and water and sewer meeting, so that I know I have what I need when it's time to start paying bills, because based on some of these comments, I'm not sure I have what I will need to move forward, if everybody's intent to make sure we can do that positively. So, if we could dot i's, cross t's, and I guess the other reason for that is, and I had spoken with Mr. Wobser in a little bit of detail about this, this is a new process for council. I don't know when, I'm sure there's been times in the past where you've fronted money to do some things to encourage good things to happen in our community that's parallel to this, similar to this. I can't recall any in my tenure here as your auditor. That being said, this is a new process, and I want to make sure the process is followed to the letter, because neither the mayor or myself or anyone sitting on this side of the aisle can speak to council's intent with regard to the legislation that you folks passed.
Mr. Calb.
Auditor, so I got a question for you. You know, you were saying that you need some additional information and stuff from my end. What are you, what are you wanting to see, and what are you expecting council to be seeing in that Water and Sewer Committee?
From my perspective, initially, just the information from the executive session would be helpful with me, because we turn it all in, so it doesn't get distributed. So, once I have that, that's the basis of what I need. But, with regard to council's Water and Sewer Committee, it's not from you that I'm worried about, it's, I want to make sure that there's a complete understanding, the understanding of what's happening is being done with the full agreement of council, that it's being done with these changes, and that I am allowed to move forward and pay for it. And that's what I want to make sure, and at this point in time, I don't want any questions. And then, to the third point, which I made, it's more about, it's not our side of the fence here that can decide what council's intent was. It's council's determination as to what their intent was. So, if this meets with all those things, I think that would need to come out in the form of, whether it be a resolution or some type of document from council, or just, or some type of affirmation that says to me, yes, even with these changes, it complies with what the intent was, so that Auditor Sasek can pay that $3 million bills coming his way.
Mr. Wobser.
Jeremy, I appreciate what the auditor is saying. I guess, has this thing evolved or changed that dramatically from our initial understanding in our executive session when we talked about this? To me, it seems to me, and then one thing you left out in the money appropriation was the money for the road extension also, which is also another piece of legislation in here. But, I don't know, from what I'm hearing, unless I'm missing something, I think what you just explained is almost exactly what we talked about in executive session several months ago.
Go ahead.
Yeah, from my end, it hasn't changed. I mean, really, what I'm looking for on the water line, where I'm running that water line, is how am I going to set ourselves up for the future, make sure we can service this site and any other future site, and then also make sure that it's the most cost-effective, you know, location go. Make sure that where, what route it's running, where it's going to be within their building site, or on their side of the building, do we have easements for the future or anything like that? You know, I don't want to put in a mile-long line, and there's only going to be one tap on that. I want to make sure if we're going to be spending the money for this, that we're going to be able to utilize it now and into the future.
Ms. Frischie.
Jeremy, I'm all about setting up for the future. Where I'm just coming from on it is, you know, $3 million, we have appropriated, we have another million from the state, and so much from ODOT. The location, I think, wiggled a little bit from my recollection, but here nor there, I just looked at it that if we're going on 212, that, some of the infrastructure's there easily. Now, with what you're proposing and saying how far we're going to extend and what that looks like, that is totally a city council discussion for us to be having, to say, this is where we want to extend development for economic development. This is our game plan. This is where we want economic development to market, and how far. And so, we need to, it needs to come back to council on some of that, because to me, some of this discussion is not the same. You know, my recollection of what I understood, I would say was different. So, all I want to know is if we can save some money, I think we should do that when we're spending a lot in other areas, and we want to greet Sheets with open arms, but we want to just do it smart.
Ms. Mayor.
So, Councilman Wobser and Councilman Greeno were happy to discuss and make sure all i's are dotted and t's are crossed. I would concur. Councilman Wobser, there was no significant changes from the executive session. Councilwoman Frisch, I know you weren't in that session, and we had discussed it over the phone, and I believe you didn't meet with me to go over the proposal, so that might be where some of the ambiguity is occurring. But, I would say it's consistent, but if that's what the auditor needs, obviously, we're happy to accommodate, to make sure that this continues to move forward as necessary.
Mr. Wobser.
The, I guess, I don't know. I think all of this was discussed in our executive committee meeting, and all of these details were discussed at that point in time about the, we talked about the expansion and building for the future. That was all brought up in that meeting. With that being said, I want the auditor bill, pay our bills. So, in just a brief discussion with Councilman Greeno, at the end of this meeting, we'll put together and call for a joint meeting with water and sewer and appropriations, so we don't use up any more time than we need to from the administration, and we can have that discussion at that point. That should get everybody where they need to be, and we'll move forward with this great project.
Mr. Baumann.
Jeremy, Rob, help me. The reason that this is even a conversation is that because The Courier originally stated a location and then had to retract that and put it in a different location, because they had incorrectly reported that to begin with.
Jeremy?
Yeah, from our side, it's always been the same site that we're talking about right now, east of Lowe's Distribution, north of Buchanan site, right there beside 230.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from Police Captain Hendren regarding State of Ohio Body-Worn Camera Grant Program.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Can I ask you?
Oh, Ms. Frischie.
Like, we don't have to put any dollar amount, as I said, we're going to, you know, fill a job position for that. Is that like indefinite? How, I mean, what kind of numbers are we talking? I'm just curious.
Mr. Martin.
So, as we talked when we prepared to do the body-worn camera program originally, this is state funding, that's an annual grant that we apply for, there's no local match. We don't know what we're going to get based on how many departments actually go after these funds and the needs that we present in the grant application, but they are directly towards the body-worn camera program. So, as we talked, we moved one of our sergeants to an administrative role that's already on the program, and he's Sergeant Walters, that's done the great presentations, very invested in this. It's just offsetting some of his salary, as well as some of the back-office software things, but again, it's non-match grant money. We knew this was a repetitive thing. We don't know when it's going to run out, but we're going to apply for it. It was, it was sent to us very quickly, and of course, the application is, a lot of these things are, we have to submit it by October 5th, so this is a quick ask tonight, so. But, no local match for this, and it's just to apply for the grant.
Letter to be filed. Oh, sorry, Mr. Wobser.
So, just to piggyback off what Councilwoman Frisch said, we don't ask a specific amount in the grant request. We're just saying, hey, give us whatever money you got for us.
We explain what our, that's a fair question. The, what we do is we explain what we have with officers, the amount of body cameras, et cetera, how our program's established and is laid out, and then they will make a determination on what dollar amount they're going to give us, not only what they feel our need is, but what's available based on other asks of the different communities.
Okay. Then, the last question I had, Rob, we had an initial grant request, I believe, to get this project started. Have we received that money?
Yes.
Okay.
We paid upfront, and then it was a reimbursement once we had it in place. So, that is, we have received that, yes.
Okay, so, we've received the money for all the grant requests that were involved with this project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Letter to be filed.
Traffic Commission Minutes of September 18th, 2023.
Questions or comments? Minutes to be filed. Committee reports.
The Appropriations Committee to whom is referred a request to discuss the proposed budget schedule. We recommend keeping the capital allocation at 20% for 2024 and 2025.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve the committee report.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the committee report, say aye. Any opposed, nay. The committee report is adopted.
The Appropriations Committee to whom is referred a request to discuss the proposed salary ordinance via Ordinance 2023-97. We recommend to approve the salary ordinance as proposed.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve the committee report.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion? All those in favor of the committee report, say aye. Any opposed, nay. The committee report is adopted. Legislation, we will start with resolutions.
Third reading for Resolution 21, 2023. A Resolution Transferring Funds Within Appropriated Funds and Declared in Emergency.
Mr. Slough.
I approve for Dr. Fred Wissel, which is going to, dash, 2023.
Second, Mr. Greeno, sorry. Discuss.
[inaudible]
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 Resolution is adopted.
Second reading for Resolution 23, 2023. A Resolution Transferring Funds Within Appropriated Funds and Declared in Emergency. First reading for Resolution 24, 2023. A Resolution City West Services, City of Finley, Ohio, will provide to the territory close to the annexed City of Finley, Ohio, to join in Allen Township, County of Hancock, City of Ohio, and being a part of the southwest quarter of Section 32, Township 2 North, Range 11 East, and the tract consisting of 77.808 acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as High Order 230, 12 Hat Trick, also known as Sheets, and a connection.
Ordinances. I'm sorry, ordinances.
Wanted to make a note that I duplicated. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names. The committee has a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed names.
And everything in there says county commissioners, township trustees work with ODOT. They seem to eliminate cities, but I agree about lowering speeds inside the city limits. I'm just saying this is a nonsense ordinance that we already have addressed it. We don't need more signage to spend money on, in my opinion, and it's a pick and choose at the end of the day.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Frishy, I appreciate your viewpoint, but I definitely disagree with it. This is something that residents on Center Street specifically brought up and I know have sent numerous emails to you all concerned, and we've decreased the traffic, you know, the traffic level, but they still will come through. And, you know, I agree, not everybody is doing it like it's some terrible issue, but there definitely are folks that consistently use it, and it's disruptive. The other thing I would note is, you know, Jeremy does a great job in his position as city engineer and consults with the county and ODOT to make sure that we're following appropriate standards, but ultimately we're responsible for the roads within the city limits, and so we're able to pass ordinances that address them. Finally, I'm not sure if you read the ordinance, but it specifically talks about in emergency situations, obviously that you're not going to be ticketed if you were doing it to protect yourself or others around you. In my opinion, passing ordinances like this are small things that show that we are listening to our citizens and trying to address some of the concerns that are being brought up, as well as, you know, trying to provide our people, you know, our officers, if they see someone doing it consistently, just riding the Jake break through town and causing disruption gives them the ability to address it. So I know it may seem silly, but it's something small that is easy to implement.
Mr. Hellman.
If I may, I had a call today from a constituent who was complaining about the noise and increased traffic on 236 and was saying that, you know, it is getting, obviously, the street itself is getting a lot more traffic since it's been improved, and I think something like this would help, especially when they use Jake break at midnight or in the middle of the night and they're coming down through there. Very few of them are, I guess the majority of them, I think, are going over the speed limit and run into something that they need to slow down, so I don't see any reason why we wouldn't pass it.
Okay, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
And Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance 2023-88, an ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Questions or comments?
Is it third?
Oh, I'm sorry, motion first. Mr. Palmer.
Move to approve ordinance number 2023-88.
Second, Mr. Ballman, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
And Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance 2023-89, an ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2023-89.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
And Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance 2023-91, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio to enter into contracts with Helms &amp; Sons Excavating Incorporated for a replacement water line on Laurel Lane appropriating funds thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Greeno.
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2023-091.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance 2023-96, an ordinance authorizing mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio to enter into contracts with Kirk Brothers Construction Incorporated for the replacement of CO2 tanks at the City of Findlay Water Treatment Plant, project number 35790800, appropriating funds thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Greeno.
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2023-096.
Second, Mr. Ballman, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Abstain.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for ordinance 2023-97, an ordinance establishing job classifications, pay ranges, salary schedules, and other matters that may affect pay for all non-elected officers and employees of the city of Findlay, Ohio, and repealing ordinance 2022-81, ordinance 2022-12, ordinance 2023-36, and all other ordinances and/or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2023-99, an ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2023-100, an ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
This is just an ordinance that moves grant money into the fire department, so I've moved that council's statutory rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Ballman, discussion. Hearing none, all those, I'm sorry, there is no discussion. All those in favor of suspending the rules say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
The rules of council have been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2023-101, ordinance 2023-101.
Mr. Ballman.
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2023-01, excuse me.
Second, Mr.
101.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2023-102, an ordinance accepting and approving an application for annexation of territory situated in the township of Allen, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, consisting of 12 parcels totaling 57.691 acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the County Road 99 racetrack annexation. First reading for ordinance 2023-103, an ordinance amending chapter 1100 et cec of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio known as a zoning code by zoning the following described property as both I-1 light industrial and C-2 general commercial as outlined below. Said annexation of territory is situated in the township of Allen, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, consisting of 12 parcels totaling 57.691 acres of, acres, here and after referred to as the County Road 99 racetrack annexation. First reading for ordinance 2023-104, an ordinance amending chapter 1100 et cec of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio known as a zoning code by rezoning the following described property referred to as 1700 Fosteria Avenue Rezone, which previously was owned C-2 general commercial to I-1 light industrial. First reading for ordinance 2023-105, an ordinance amending chapter 1100 et cec of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio known as a zoning code by rezoning the following described property referred to as 315 Walnut Street Rezone, which previously was owned R3 Small Lot Residential to C1 local commercial. First reading for ordinance 2023-106, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Findlay, Ohio to enter into a contract for calendar years 2023 through 2025 with the Hancock County Public Defender Commission and the Hancock County Commissioners for a total of $95,000 per year for said calendar years and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ballman.
Move that council's statutory rules be suspended and ordinance number 2023-019 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Slough. All those in favor of suspension of the rules say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Nay.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Nay.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
And Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Did not pass.
The request to suspend the rules did not pass. Next.
First reading for ordinance 2023-107, an ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Okay, next.
First reading for ordinance 2023-108, an ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2023-109, an ordinance authorizing mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio to apply for grant funds and enter into an agreement and/or related documents with the Ohio Department of Transportation Office of Aviation for the design of the rehabilitation of runway 725 located at the City of Findlay Airport and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
What's the deadline for this grant? Is that coming up quick?
Yeah, so the window opened October 1st on that, and it is competitive. I mean, they do work hand in hand with the FAA and usually when we get those, but if I could get this passed tonight so that way we can get our application in sooner, I mean, that would be great.
Mr. Palmer.
I move that council's statutory rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Slough. All those in favor of suspension of the rules say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm getting, Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
The ordinance has been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2023-109, ordinance 2023-109.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading. Ordinance 2023-111, ordinance 2023-111.
Mr. Palmer.
Since this is just funds from the insurance company to help replace this box, I move that council's statutory rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Niemeyer. All those in favor of suspension of the rules say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2023-111, ordinance 2023-111.
Mr. Palmer.
Move for adoption of ordinance number 2023-111.
Second, Mr. Ballman, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2023-112, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the necessary parties, including but not limited to the Hancock County Engineer and the Allen Township Trustees, to assist with roadway improvements to Distribution Drive north of County Road 212 and Township Road from Distribution Drive east to Township Road 230. Last one. First reading for ordinance 2023-113, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or service safety director of the city of Findlay, Ohio to apply for grant funding and enter into an agreement and/or related documents with the Office of Criminal Justice Services for the State of Ohio Body worn Camera Grant Program to secure additional funding to support the salary of the recently created full-time position within the Findlay Police Department, as well as secure additional software to support the Findlay Police Department Body worn Camera Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Wobser.
Since we're working on a tight timeline here and this is just applying for a grant, make a motion to suspend council's rules and give this last two readings.
Second, Mr. Ballman, all those in favor of suspension of the rules say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Ordinance 2023-113, ordinance 2023-113.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion. Mr. Wobser.
Mr. President, we never took a vote on suspension.
I'm sorry, was that me or Denise?
I'd probably be.
I'm blaming her.
We go to where you want to lay the blame.
Okay, all those, we had a first and a second, all those in favor of the suspension of the rules say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Old business, oh, sorry, Ms. Mayor.
I believe this would kind of fall under old business. As I was reviewing this, I apologize, I didn't catch it sooner. Ordinance number 2023-104, the rezoning of 1700 Fosteria Avenue Rezone, that should not be on the agenda. It was tabled at both City Planning Commission and Planning and Zoning Committee, so I would request to ensure that when that is considered at those committees, a clean process moving forward, that council vote to remove that item from the agenda so that we can then introduce proper legislation at the next committee or the next council meeting, assuming the committee does recommend that.
Mr. Wobser.
I would make a motion then that, given that, we remove ordinance 2023-104 from council's agenda.
Second, Mr. Slough, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the removal of that ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Ballman.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
That item is removed.
Thank you.
Back, old business. Ms. Frishy.
Looking for some updates on the meter transmitter fixing of bills and what was proposed back in, I think, in June sometime. I know it went through water and sewer, but we still have to change the water and sewer policy in order to correct bills and so forth.
So, we're in the final stages, the two different cycles that went out. First one, phase one of the cycle we dealt with earlier this year. Phase two, we just went through that, where the last batch of the transmitters had true readings, so we're going through that reconciliation process where they had the 500%. We're running those numbers, we're communicating with those residents, and then we should have this trued up and cleaned up here real soon, and then we'll move forward from there.
I don't understand, I mean, if we're going to invoke a remedy, a policy of how we're handling bills, how are you paying them and truing them up until we change the water policy and pass that at council?
Ms. Mayor.
Sorry, I know, we need like a mirror, you need to have a mirror so you can see me behind you. No, so if you recall at the meeting, Ginger, Deputy Auditor Sampson, said that because it was documented in the council meeting, that that was sufficient for the appropriate documentation until we look at the larger policy and change the rules, but that will be a larger conversation.
Ms. Frishy.
So there's a lot of folks that are telling me they have bills sitting out there, they've gotten shut-off notices, the newest phase is coming through, so you're reaching out to all of them, and you have the first group, everybody that's going to get a 75% write-off or a 24-month payment plan has been notified and they're under control.
Mr. Martin.
So, I'm not going to say yes because I want to make sure what you just said, I'm not, that's not completely true, so have the customers, if there's, as always, reach out to the water utility billing department, and we will work with every individual. If somebody has a reconciliation that's required, either credit or debit, we will then work with them through the process that's been approved by the committee. So, we're being very consistent and we're following the processes put in place for this reconciliation process.
Ms. Mayor.
And I would just add to that, as Rob stated, obviously, if somebody's having an issue still, they need to contact us, but a mailing went out to all of the identified individuals or account holders. We outlined what their change was with them. If anyone received a past due notice, there was no shut-offs that were occurring unless it was someone who it did not apply to. We called them and talked to them and said, hey, your bill is past due and this doesn't apply to you, and it was, you know, a previous issue. So, contacts have been made, mailings went out, and with this next round, we're able to do more preemptive letters to those individuals so that it definitely will be cleaner, but if you're still hearing from people, they need to contact the water department because I think that there's some misinformation that's being circulated.
Other old business. Mr. Neymar.
I guess this is for the law director or their office. Was there any response from Ohio Liquor Board about the tracks application for Scrambler Marie's, the liquor license application, because there wasn't a social security number on it at that time?
I don't believe there was a problem with it, I think it went through.
But we, we didn't see anything, and we tabled it back in end of May or first part of June.